I've been moving.
Good morning. I'd like to bring the Board of Selectmen meeting to order. It's Monday morning, July 6, 2015. It is now 8:30 a.m. The first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. So I'd like to ask Charles to lead us, please. Selectman Harrington?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Charles. Item two, public forum. We've been into three minutes on any agenda item. I don't see anybody wishing to address the board, so we'll move on. Item three, approval of the minutes, 3.1, minutes of July 15, 2015, excuse me, June 15, 2015, regular meeting.
With their approval?
Second. Any additions or corrections? See none. I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Approved. Item 3.2, June 23, 2015, special meeting. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any additions or corrections? See none. I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Same, I wasn't here.
That's three affirmative, one abstention. Thank you. Item four, town engineer, Jim Portley, 4.1, remove from the table and take possible action on award of bid 5-1516 to 2016 six-wheel dump trucks, cab and chassis, only subject to the recommendations from the Board of Finance in accordance with April 9, 2013 bond resolutions. Morning, Jim.
Good morning. How's everybody?
Good, thank you.
As usual, your timing's impeccable.
Geez, you're on time. Joe has been harassing me since last time to get here on time. These are two trucks we had previously bid out, a full package, back under bid number 20-1415, but we didn't have funds to outfit them at the time. So this is for the cab, the chassis, the frame, everything. So we have these two bids. We will outfit the trucks at a later date. We have bids preparing today to tailor the rest of the fit-out to what the funds we have. And then we'll get those bids, put them together, and then see what we have to do. But I would recommend the Board of Selectmen approve the only bid from Bridge Haven Ford Sales and Services, DBA Gabrielli Truck Sales of Milford for the price of $220,460 for both trucks. So they won basically $110,000 each.
Is the plan to have the dealership or whatever do the outfitting at this point?
No. No, we would have a, there are four or five separate contracts.
My guess, my question was, are we going to have it done? I remember the last time we bought one, we thought we were going to be able to do it, and we found out that it was better to get it done. Where does this one stand?
It's going to be better to get it done as far as we can with the money we have. And then we're going to have to just, you know, we're going to use an old plow. We're going to have to make our own plow frame, but the basic truck will be outfitted someplace else.
Okay. And we're doing this separately from that outfitting, just to get the thing ordered and keep the...
Right. Yeah, you have to get it once to get online, to get the trucks ordered.
That's what I'm thinking. So it's not a costing where if we did the whole thing together, we'd be better off?
No.
We're doing it separately.
Right. And that's typically what's done. Either the people who build the body and the frame, either they buy the truck or we buy the truck, and then they'll have it outfitted. This way, we get the truck, we get... There's only one truck manufacturer. The manufacturer of these Macs, Gabrielli has bought up all the other dealerships in the tri-state area. So basically, we're down to one vendor for the truck. But there are a number of people who do the fit-out. So this way, we can have competition among them, and we don't, you know, we can get a better price. It is our understanding.
Okay. So you're implying that it might actually be cheaper to piece it out? As opposed to doing it in one?
Yeah. No, I'm not replying to that. I'm saying...
Jim, what's the lead time on the caps and chassis?
I think it's 90 days.
Okay.
Yeah, so we, it's a good chance we, you know, July, August, September, still hopefully get it in service by the beginning of next year.
Next year, meaning calendar?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because that was my question.
December, January of this year.
So it would be ready, fitted out and ready by winter?
Yeah. That's our hope.
And this is a Mac?
Yes. Yeah.
And I know that we've done a couple other than Macs, and that this has been vetted by the commission?
Yes, we have. This was approved by the Public Works Commission back in, what month were you in? June.
Yeah, this is July.
Yeah.
Is it, you know, is it a specification thing? Because one time we got into a discussion with one of the dealers that, you know, the specs were kind of aimed at a Mac. I mean, are we beyond that at this point in time?
Yes, we are. Yeah, they, we have other truck manufacturers can meet our specifications for all the things we do with the trucks, but they say is they can't beat the price of Mac. They have to upgrade their trucks. They have, there are trucks that you can always add on to, but it's not their standard. And so because you go beyond their standard, it costs more.
Jim, I tend not to want to compare our town with other towns, but do other public works departments use similar equipment like Mac trucks? Or do they go with international or...
My experience is that it depends on how aggressive the Public Works Department is in the towns and what they do with the trucks. Macs is trying to gear up to what we have. They are, matter of fact, they're trying to piggyback on this bid so that they can get the same kind of truck. They would like to expand their capability to do some of their own construction. A lot of towns don't do a lot of construction. I think we're unique in that respect in that we, you know, we design our workloads so that we're working 12 months a year. We're not just plowing snow and then waiting around for the snow to come again. We've got a lot of construction activities that we do. Some towns, I think like Wallenford, is pretty aggressive. They do the same thing. And I won't mention the other towns because it's not worth, you know, insulting anybody. So I think anybody who does a comparable or has a comparable workload that we have, they would go Mac. Because these aren't just, these aren't trucks that we use just on the road. We use them off-road depending on how, and how, what we do with them.
So you're looking at equipment that we can use 12 months of the year, not just for plowing?
Yes.
Or just for construction, but 12 months out of the year?
Yes.
Okay.
My perfect example is last summer, you saw trucks going down. Our old quarry, our trucks were hauling, you know, we were using the millings. We, you know, we tried to, we tried to keep moving all the time.
Okay.
In the bond bid, or the money allocated in the bond, how much do you have left for the fit-out?
I believe we had a...
I can tell you that.
Oh, please, thank you.
You have $185,000 for each truck. Okay, so this would be 110 for trucks, so 75 for each truck, $150,000 carriage for the two.
Right. One time we got caught where, I caught, but we were finding that some of the newer equipment, both trucks and other equipment, was requiring additional computer programs, training, and that. Has that kind of leveled off? I mean, now that we're gearing ourselves up to this more technical level of service, is every truck we're going to buy, we have to buy a new program for that truck?
No, no. We have, we bought these software for the Mac, and as part of the bid package, they will supply the upgrades.
So that's kind of leveling off once you get back up?
But it's a good question, because I think that's the, that reflects, the price reflects the increased amount of computers in these trucks. There's like five or six computers.
And computer training.
And training, but there's also, I mean, there, all these trucks are now designed to meet the new EPA air quality standards. And it's not like years ago, you had to maintain a truck, you were checking carburetor, you're checking oil. These trucks are very sophisticated. And I think the truck manufacturers, they've come up with these systems to meet the standards, but they were more sophisticated than they thought. So they've had to upgrade, that's why they've increased the cost, because it's just, it's more... I think they've had more trucks returned to them under warranty because of the amount of debugging they have to do in the...
Well, once we've got some of the programs kind of update themselves for the new models and that type of thing, that's part of the package.
That's part of the package, right.
Necessary, you mean?
Yes, it is.
So we need a motion to approve the bid received from Bridge Haven Ford Sales and Services, Inc., DBA Gabrielli Truck Sales of Milford for the bid price of $220,460 for both trucks.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? See none. I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Thank you. Jim, we have 4.2, discuss and take possible action on bid 4-1516, sand for snow and ice control. Can you even talk about that?
In July. Never too soon. We only had one bid, and that was from Seashore Construction. The bid price was $12.95 per cubic yard. It's within the budget amount. We had a price of $13.10 per cubic yard in our budget estimate. So I would recommend the Board of Selectmen award the bid to Seashore Construction for $12.95.
So moved.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Okay, have a good day. Move on to item five, in-house counsel, purchase team manager, Pam Millman. 5.1, consider and take possible action on amendments to the Route 1 road banner policy. Morning, Pam.
Good morning. This actually was brought to my attention by the first selectman that there was an issue with the length of the banners that go across the post-road. And it was determined that they needed to be 30 feet in length, that 20... We had a minimum of 20 feet and a maximum of 30. And apparently, the 20 does not work. It's too short. So a couple of years ago, you passed a banner policy. And what you're doing today is just making a revision to Section 3.6, third bullet point, and changing the requirement that the banners need to be 30 feet in length.
I'll move that. Okay.
Second. Any discussion on that? Jim?
I saw it on the agenda. You know, this past year, we've had problems maintaining the poles and the anchors for that banner. I think several months ago, Joe and I had a conversation about it. We really ought to look into, instead of having that, those banners, maybe some kind of a message board on Route 1 that we can then use it. We could use it on the green when we have the votes. It would allow us more flexibility. When they built Route 1 through the 20s and 30s, the north side was a bog, and we've put anchors in there, and they just keep pulling out. They put longer, they're screw anchors. And we use the equipment that, I guess, CNP at first used when they put these poles up in all the towns, just to, as a kind of a public service thing. But I'm very much afraid that when those cables are going to snap, and we're going to have a real problem someday when heavy winds or whatever, you know, because those banners carry a lot...
Whipping around, whipping around. When they break loose, they just, yeah.
And that's scary. I mean, when everything snaps, you never know what could happen. So I think it really, if you can find somebody someplace, buy a message board along, and put this, whatever you want to call it, out on Route 1 in lieu of this kind of a banner system, it would be much safer for the town instead of going ahead and changing...
That's an interesting point. Making it 30 feet makes it that much more wind resistant, which adds to the problem. I wonder if there's a way we can make sure that they're the vented ones. I mean, it has sufficient vented ones. It's in there.
The venting is in there.
But you get some of these high wind days. I mean, we're looking to blow these 80-foot trees over. I mean, these are, we've had some real serious problems.
Well, a message board would save all the organizations a lot of money.
Yeah. You could charge a little bit to pay, to fray the cost for over a pair of years.
Well, I think for the time being, the issue at hand is that the fire department, who installs the banners for the organization, can't do it at 20 feet. We had an issue about a month or two ago where an organization had to pay extra to have their banner extended, and wasn't advised when they filed their application months ago that they had to have a 30-foot banner rather than a 20. And it caused some issue and some aggravation and additional money. So I think for now, we should change the regulation to say 30, but that's not to say we should not look into a message board. That's my feeling on it. Okay. So, Jim, it's a good point you made, and I think we should look into it. It's probably something that we should put into the next budget, definitely. And if you could look into it for us in the meantime, I appreciate that.
Sure.
Yeah, the challenge is going to be, because they tried to do that with the billboard up by the diner, have, you know, one of those rotating message board type things. The neighbors worked up about that, but maybe things have changed.
But you're more in a commercial zone.
I think there's some area there, but you put it on Route 1 right in front of where the banner was.
Yeah. And maybe people are melod, I mean, the kiosk is going to have one, so.
Oh, my God, do we know that?
Just one last one, Pam. Are there any issues about the town owning something and just renting it out for messages?
I'd have to look into, you know, I'd have to research it, think about it.
I, you know, I think you're right. It'd be, I don't know what these banners cost, but a 30-foot banner is not an insignificant cost, so. And there are towns that have on certain entry points in town message boards, and this is what's happening. So, I mean, it makes a lot of sense if it's workable.
I think, you know, it certainly reduces the liability to the town. I think we, this is now offered, so we're really, we're having a hard time actually maintaining it. We received a lot of hardware and cables from CNP and the telephone company over the years. Those sources have dried up, and trying to find some of this cable and turnbuckles and all sorts of stuff that you need.
Yeah, when the wind's going, it's shocking how much those poles move and everything.
Oh, yeah.
You just sit there, whoa.
God forbid something happened.
I'll second. I will, I will move that we amend the banner...
No, no, he didn't. We just discussed it.
We just said, I move that we amend the banner policy as presented.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you, Pam.
Sure.
Item six, Park and Recreation, Rick Maynard, Director. 6.1, discuss and take possible action to award security camera contract for the community center. Morning, Rick.
Good morning. I can just add one thing about the banner. For the Frosty 5K race, one year, we had a banner across Route 1, and it just broke in half, and it was just flopping around. And it was vented, the way it was supposed to be vented too, but the wind just destroyed it.
It is problematic.
Yeah. The security cameras, we, Tony Santocranzolo, I have to say, was very, very helpful with me, because this is technical stuff. It was way over my head, but he and I spent a lot of time going through different proposals. And I think you might have a letter from you that had three different prices there.
Excuse me, Rick. You guys want to keep it down there? You had your turn.
Oh, I did another turn.
Sorry, Rick, go ahead.
And so we were going to recommend that the Board of Selectmen award the contract to Strategic Security Incorporated. It's the same company that recently got the contract for the police department. So we thought there was a lot of good in having the same system that they have, and they were the lowest price anyway. And that included eight cameras. This is all in the community center. We have the potential of expanding if we want to put outdoor cameras somewhere, like a remote location, the beach or something. We can do that in the future. But for now, we're just in the community center. It includes the cameras, all the training, you know, everything, all the hardware that goes with it, software. We also have a 32-inch monitor. These will be on our computers, but I won't have a monitor in the office. So if there's, you know, if I'm not sitting at my computer all the time, there's something going on, there'll be a monitor that other people in the office will be able to see. So that's all included in here.
Hardwired?
It's all hardware, yeah. Yeah. But if we go off-site, they can do it through, I'm not sure how to do if it's cable or what, but if we had it at the beach or skate park or something, they have a way they can get it to the community center.
Makes sense to have one from the kiosk watching outside of the...
Yeah. Actually, we have, we have one near the preschool playground outside at the playground, but also the driveway coming in, which would show Route 77.
All right. Do we need a motion?
And this is all installation. They'll do all the wiring and everything.
Everything, yeah. The training.
Okay. You want to make a motion? Yes, and installation and training.
All right, so you want to go with strategic security?
Correct.
For the price of $12,065?
Right.
I'll move that.
I'll second it. What's your timing on it, Rick?
As soon as we can, I'll contact them, and we'll get the purchase order as soon as I get the word from you folks, and we'll get a purchase order with them. And I think they can pretty quickly get here and install it.
It's in the budget, you mean?
Yes.
When I asked what's your timing, I mean, when you asked for estimates, that you asked what their lead time would be.
We didn't, but I think they were pretty quick with the police department. So, yeah, I mean, we, we've been working on it since February. You know, we went through, we sat down with some of these companies. We looked at their systems. Tony and I went back and forth about a couple of different things, and then we talked to the police department. Since they did install their, asked how they like it, and they said it's easy to operate. And the school system has a similar one that some of these other companies have, but we like better what security, strategic security offered with the police department. It's the same system.
Does the building have security cameras at this point?
No.
It doesn't?
And what's driving it?
Newtown?
Is this in your 2015 or 2016 budget?
15. It's in capital, so it's carried over. So it's the budget of the year just completed. Yeah.
So suddenly, we have to carry and force, then?
Yes. Yeah, she and I talked about it.
Sheila says no.
We'll accommodate the funds.
Okay. Okay, good. Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Eric? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
It's unfortunate, I'm going to comment Newtown, it's unfortunate that, you know, everything is just increased security and...
Well, the thing I'm struggling with, I mean, it's hard to argue with the kind of a statement. It's just that, you know, are we going to get to the point where, you know, meetings and that type of thing are going to be key-carded and locked doors and all of that type of thing? Yeah, I know the schools have to do it, and it's very real. I just wonder if that's the direction we're going with the community center also.
Well, you know, it's also, I think it'd help reduce some vandalism. You know, sometimes, we have one in the game, for example, and kids like poking holes in ceiling tiles in there. So we'll see that, you know, so it's kind of, it's that issue too.
Yeah. I mean, I was almost surprised that the building didn't have any existing one at this point in time.
All right, move on. Item seven, discuss and take possible action on an application from the St. George Men's Group for noise control ordinance for its drive-in movie night taking place on July 25, 2015. We have an application in front here for variance. Sir, you're from the St. George?
I am.
Would you like to come and address the board?
Sure, I'm just here if you have anything to say or questions.
State your name, please.
Robert Mangillo.
Okay. Just want to tell us something about your event?
Sure. So we're promoting fundraiser behind St. George Church, use of the parking lot. It's a pretty huge parking lot, to benefit the Catholic Worker House in New Haven. The event will actually be Star Wars movie. It's like old-fashioned nostalgic movie night. Bring the community together. Pretty nominal charge for food, but we expect the movie to go until about 10:30. And I know normal noise ordinance is 10 o'clock on Saturday.
Okay.
Worked good for the NIC event. That's low screen at NIC County, whatever, but it did work good.
Okay. I guess, I saw the sign last night in front of the church. I guess people don't necessarily need to bring their cars. Is that right?
That's correct. We'll accept walk-ins as well.
Okay. Someone like to make a motion?
What do we need to...
To give them a variance at 10:30.
Okay, okay. I move that we provide a variance for St. George's Men's Club for their drive-in movie night, July 25, 2015, rain date. Was, I saw the rain date here.
September 26?
Yeah, that...
Make the motion. I have a question on that.
Second, I second.
The rain date is two months later. That just seems a little strange.
It's actually, it's based on the availability of the group members. We have other events coming up in between there, and we have to get the rain date in within six months based on the company who rents the screen.
Okay.
Okay.
I would also suggest that, well, we have a, we have a signed request that goes with that, so, which is fine. We'll take it up, I guess, while we do the signs, but...
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you, gentlemen. Good luck.
Thank you.
Can you hold on to my pen? That's over there. Item eight, thank you, appointments and resignations, 8.1, act on appointment of Stephen Cops to the Hazard Mitigation Commission to fill a vacancy for a term to expire September 30, 2017.
So moved. Second.
All of the favor?
Aye.
8.2, act on a recommendation to reappoint Martha Carlson to the Board of Police Commissioners for a term to expire June 30, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Got to vote for that one.
Yeah.
Is this her second term or is this her...
This is her second.
Okay.
8.3, act on a recommendation to appoint Diane Van Sternberg to the Park and Recreation Commission for a term to expire February 28, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Act on a recommendation to appoint Chris Hudson to the Guilford Lakes Golf Course Commission to fill a vacancy for a term to expire September 30, 2018.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Act on a recommendation to appoint Emily Cello to the Conservation Commission to fill a vacancy for a term to expire February 28, 2018.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Act on a recommendation to appoint Patrizia Di Leonardo to the Conservation Commission for a term to expire February 28, 2019.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Act on a recommendation to appoint Kimberly Brockett to the Agricultural Commission to fill a vacancy for a term to expire September 29, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that finishes number eight.
Joe, I would just comment, because I talked to Kevin on the way in, the two people who applied to the Conservation Commission have been attending meetings, so they understand what's going on. I would just urge everybody that is interested in joining a commission to attend a meeting or two, just to make sure that it's what they think it is and that they're comfortable with the activities that that particular commission involves.
The town committee's nominating process has made that a semi...
Yeah.
Good. Item nine, request for the use of town property.
I would move that we approve the three signed requests as delineated in the minutes, or in the agenda.
Is there a second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Correspondence. I have been receiving a couple of emails in regard to the food truck that's been appearing on Boston Street. And I responded back to those emails and let them know that staff, including the police department, are working on rewriting or tweaking the regulations, which, once a draft is presentable and agreed upon, will be presented to the Board of Selectmen for consideration and action. So that's where we are with that, gentlemen. Okay.
I just, you know, I assume that in that review of the regulations, we're not necessarily working towards eliminating them as much as making sure that they are controlled within certain confines in the future. as much as making sure that they are controlled within certain confines in the future and that type of thing.
Correct. I mean, there's, they're protected under the state statute, they can't really eliminate them, so.
But we don't want it to expand into something that we don't want either.
Correct. Okay, any other correspondence? Committee reports? Nothing to report at this time, anybody? No. All business, I have none. New business, other than the community picnic, is July 11. It's this coming Saturday, I believe, which is also the date for the fireworks that evening at the fairgrounds. I assume, Mike, this is going to get on before July 11.
Yeah.
Being today is the 6th. Okay. Public forum, limited to three minutes on any item. I don't see anybody wishing to address the board. So we'll move on, and I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. We're adjourned at 9:01.